Namah Om Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shri Mate Bhakti Vedanta Swamini Tinoamene Namah Om Vishnu Padaya Krishna Prishthaya Bhutale Shri Mate Bhakti Vedanta Swamini Tinoamene Namaste Sarasvate Deva Goyavali Pracharinay Pashata Deshakarine Namaste Sarasvate Deva Goyavali Pracharinay Pashata Deshakarine Jai Sri Krishna Jai Tanya Prabhu Nityananda Shriya Dveta Radadhara Shiva Sadhi Gauri Bhaktavinda Jai Sri Krishna Jai Tanya Prabhu Nityananda Shriya Dveta Radadhara Shiva Sadhi Gauri Bhaktavinda Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari 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 Krishna Hari Krishna 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 Hari 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 Rama Hari Rama 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 Hari Hari Jayagora Nitaay Gora Nitaay Gora Nitaay Jayagora Nitaay
Jayagora Nitaay Gora Nitaay Gora Nitaay Jayagora Nitaay
Jayaprabhu Padha Jayaprabhu Padha Prabhu Padha Jayaprabhu Padha
Jayaprabhu Padha Prabhu Padha Prabhu Padha Jayaprabhu Padha
Jayajaya Guru Dev guru Dev Guru Dev Jayajaya Guru Dev
Jayajaya Guru Dev Guru Dev Guru Dev Jayajaya Guru Dev
Neetay Gaur Haribho 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 Neetay Gaur Haribho
Neetay Gaur Haribho 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 Neetay Gaur Haribho
Neetay Gaur Premanandre Haribho Chakta Dushyurapuro Padhichya Anandukunti Veshna Bindi
Hari Krishna and Pranam Sia devotees We are back with our Wednesday sessions with His Holiness Priti Wajan Maharaj So Maharaj today is travelling to Kolkata Maharaj is on the way, he is being, he is driving So we decided that instead of taking our regular reading sessions, we will have Q and A session with Maharaj Hari Krishna Maharaj
Hari Krishna Bro, I don't know, can you hear me properly?
It's breaking Maharaj
Yeah, I was afraid of that Well, I am not even putting the video on
So, we can, Hari Krishna Maharaj, Pranam, we can hear
Now it is coming
You can, so, we can have it like this Now I can just be talking and hopefully the signal will remain good
Okay Yes Maharaj, maybe, maybe still is, Ronny Prabhu, I couldn't even hear you properly So maybe it's English
Yes, some problems
Okay, so, how it is coming? You go ahead, you coordinate on point
Hari Krishna Maharaj, Dandrapranam So Hari Krishna everyone, so we, today we are going to have a Q and A session as Giraj Prabhu mentioned So maybe request everybody to raise their hands if they have any questions And they can also put that, the questions on the chat So that we can ask Maharaj the questions Yes, so first one are Vinod Prabhu and Rishi Mathaji Hari Krishna, you can go ahead Prabhuji and Mathaji
Hari Krishna Hari Krishna Maharaj, Sanvat Pranams
Hari Krishna
Maharaj, my question is related with the food So I just wanted to ask like when we prepare the food Normally whenever we prepare the prasad, we prepare the bhoga for Krishna The ingredients are mostly of our choice So you know, if I want to eat capsicum, I'll eat, I'll put capsicum in whatever I am cooking, else I'll not So basically the bhav at that time is that because I don't like this particular thing, so I'll not put it So basically will that be considered being cooked for Krishna? Yes, we don't eat anything without bhoga, without offering it to Krishna But when we are cooking, the choices mostly ours, the ingredients are of our choice And also when I was reading, I read it somewhere that the press, we should not eat too much So if it is, if it is prasad, can, is it okay to eat too much or have that greed for prasad and have that greed for different dishes and for palatable dishes? Is that okay? Hari Krishna
Hari Krishna, okay, so, in regard what do you offer to Krishna? So, you see, you can have, you can offer to Krishna whatever you understand is the best Of course following the principles, so Patram Pushpam Falantoyam But, so that kind of offering to Krishna will be on the level of Sakkama Bhakti That means that you offer whatever you consider the best So you will choose now what you like, you offer it to Krishna and then after that you take prasad So Krishna will accept it and it will be prasad and it's bhakti But then after some time of doing that, like now you are asking, is it alright? Or is there something now beyond it? So then yes, there is a level next to, no, level beyond that and there is Nishkama Bhakti Then you start wondering about, okay, I am offering to Krishna some, I don't know, can be some pasta or some pizza or, no, I am offering him, no, this savji because I like it I am not offering this savji because I don't like it For example like, you know, some niem alu, I don't like it, I don't offer it So then that's on the Sakkama Bhakti But Nishkama Bhakti, then you start wondering, actually what it is that Krishna likes? And knowing what Krishna likes, then let me do that And since I do it for Krishna, now I will do it the best way how it should be done So then I will consult Guru Sadhusastra and now see, now what is the best way, how to do it? What is the best ingredients and how to prepare it? And then after that, when we offer it, then we just learn to like it It may be something unusual little bit, but now after some time, we find out that actually it's quite tasty Now for example like the, you know, bitter savji, the concept of bitter savji is sometimes now strange for people Now, I don't think that in northern India, they use much of like a bitter savji But no, it's a Bengali, but that's what Lord Chetan Mahaprabhu likes No, he likes shukta Now shark is also considered a bit bitter But Chetan Mahaprabhu loves shark So it may, and I can see now from how the boys, when the boys come to Gurukul, then they may not like it in the beginning But they all take always a little bit, at least just the taste And after some time, these bitter savjis, now they can be one of the best savjis which they prefer So it's about just to also adjust the taste for it So if we are doing it to please Krishna, to adjust, to take what he likes, it's not difficult afterwards So, yeah, that's what it is, so those two level, levels Sakkama and then Nishkama Sakkama it's just what we like, but we offer it The results are offered and therefore we still eat prasad But the Nishkama, the whole process is offered to Krishna, not just the results So we always remember him And the Sakkama, that means we don't forget him You understand?
Yes Maharaj, so we are currently at a stage of Sakkam wherein we prepare what we want to eat and we offer it to Krishna So my question was, is that greed for eating good dishes, is that okay? Because we talk about controlling our senses and tongue is also one of those senses So if the tongue wants to eat a good dishes and we prepare specially to satisfy our tongue, but then we offer it to Krishna and only then we eat So is that okay?
See, it's not the very ideal But on the Sakkama platform, it's alright, it's okay now in the beginning to do that But at the same time, then we should be now wondering and like, no, we should be interested in kind of like, okay, I am cooking here because I want to enjoy But no, then it's some like consciousness, this, then we feel a little bit guilty Now, I am doing it for myself, of course I offer to Krishna, but actually it's for myself So the consciousness, then it will help us to eventually come over that It's a process which may take now some time, months, years easily But it will come to the point that we will be concerned about and we will be able to overcome that And same also for the quantity You see Shastra, no, pre skypes, sanyasi, no, be eating only this much, just basically few morsels Then vana prasta, he can eat little bit more Grihasta, he can eat more than that And for brahmachari, there is no limit how much brahmachari can eat So now saying that means if you are eating prasad, you are purifying yourself And especially for brahmacharis, Nashiraprabhat, now he would encourage, okay, eat, eat, you have a feast, eat So then they would eat a lot, they would overeat, they would be sick And they may not be able to do now their duties afterwards So then they start to think about, okay, how much is too much? So if you can eat it and digest it and still not compromise your nityaseva, then it's alright You can just enjoy yourself, you know, eating the quantity now of the prasad But if it starts now hampering your devotional activities Because you overeat, you cannot get up, you cannot change your rounds, you cannot do deity worship and it was just because you overeat, then it's too much, then you should not do that You understand that?
Yes Maharaj, so what I understand is that we don't need to put any efforts as in manually to reach up to that level with, as we progress in Dakti, it will come automatically
Yes, it will be your consciousness which will actually catch up with that and it will, now, now the feeling, that the push will come from that And you will naturally start thinking, like you are thinking now, you are wondering whether it's right or wrong So then now when you are going to do it, now, of course, you see, you are now, you have a family So then your husband may ask something, please cook today this Or children may ask, okay, please not cook that, or your guests will say, okay, cook this for me So then you don't have to worry about, now, that you are cooking something now which somebody now likes If you are doing it now for your guests or for your family, you are definitely pleasing Krishna, whatever you are cooking You understand?
Yes Maharaj
So, so as you are cooking, now so then don't be too mental about, oh, no, maybe my husband asked me to cook pizza today, but I don't know Krishna maybe doesn't like pizza, so I should, I don't
Maharaj, you broke up
Your husband offer it to the guest, so, and try to please them Pleasing them, pleases Krishna more than if you are trying to, just please Krishna but not the guest
Yes Maharaj, understood, thank you Maharaj
Okay
Hari Krishna Maharaj, I have, I also have one question So I was reading like, we should, there is, there is, out of ten offenses, there is an offense like we should commit offenses on the strength of holy name So I just wanted to understand, how will I know that I am, if I am doing something, I am committing a sin or not? And maybe we, we may commit sin unknowingly even, so how would we know that I am committing a sin?
See, the difference is only in consciousness So you may commit some, you may make mistake, something foolish you may do Now, after that, what do you think? Right? Now your conscience now starts now giving a guilt, you did something wrong and there's the intelligence But the mind is now, please kind of like, yes, no, that's nice, now gratifying the senses So, now, how are you now going to deal with it? So then, you, what are your options? If you try to solve this problem, looking for some material solutions, it will not work So Shastra now says, okay, approach Krishna So approaching devotionless service, devotionless activities, enchanting of the holy name To remove the anarta causing you to do nonsense, it's fine, it's good, that's the way Again, it's not, not shudhabhakti, nonetheless, it's a Sakkama Bhakti and it's, it's, it's good Now, we, but the conscience is about, I want to get rid of it And unfortunately, I am committing the And unfortunately, I'm committing the same mistake again and again, but I'm trying. And therefore, this is not the chanting of the holy name, no, this is not the committing apparat. It's not committing sinful activities on the strength of the holy name. This is in the case when one commits a mistake. I made some nonsense, so then let it be. I will go and chant some holy name and I will free of the reactions for the nonsense. And I like it. This is apparat. That's very, very severe, because there is no conscience, there is no guilt of that we did something. We are actually using the name to avoid punishment for our sinful activities. Do you understand the difference?
Yes, Maharaj, it's, it's clear. Thank you, Maharaj.
Yeah, that's all.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna. So do we have more questions?
Hare Krishna.
Yes, Mahatji, go ahead.
Hare Krishna Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
My, my question is related to the next, actually, which is actually we have read, but I was reading about. It's Prabhupada is comparing us about the confidence, basically, defining the confidence that how much we are depending upon Krishna, that is the meaning of confidence, which is exactly opposite of confidence of material world, actually. So but because we are being habitual for that one, whenever some difficult situation comes, we feel that, yes, we feel confident in ourselves, or maybe our later or something like that, that yes, we able to overcome that problem. So how do we learn to depend more on Krishna on such a difficult situation, where we have a habit of depending on ourselves and being confident that we can do that?
Okay, so I probably, I didn't hear the whole thing. I understand about confidence, but I, I, yeah, I didn't hear everything. Could you please maybe just give the synopsis of it?
Yes, Maharaj. How to understand the confidence which Prabhupada is defending, depending upon more on Krishna?
The confidence in, in approaching Krishna?
Depend upon Krishna Maharaj, like on day to day life.
Sorry, I, I didn't hear this. I'm sorry.
Mahatji, your voice is echoing, maybe that's why Maharaj is not able to.
Maybe, maybe the signal, I'm not sure.
Maharaj, should I ask for you?
Yes.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Maharaj, Mahatji is asking that how can we depend more on Krishna in terms of the confidence?
Okay, okay. So first of all, now to start depending on Krishna, then we have to develop now certain faith, now shraddha. And then we perform the activities, whatever we are supposed to do, with confidence. And then because we are confident, then also now there is enthusiasm. If we don't have the shraddha, then what happens? There is a lack of confidence and in fact, there will be more doubts. Because I don't have faith that Krishna is the supreme person, I don't have faith that Krishna, now he's Bhagavan, he has all the six opulences in full. Now, maybe there is somebody who is same or more like him. And now I'm not sure now whether this material world is inferior energy or it's superior. I'm not sure now if heavenly planets are not as good as my kunta. No, we may, we may just be not sure. We have, did not develop the shraddha yet and therefore, these doubts will be popping in our mind. These doubts will make us incompetent in progress and incompetent in, in doing devotion activities. If we are not sure that Krishna, now he's the supreme or no, whatever it may be, then what's the point of me chanting sixteen rounds a day in the morning? Why don't I sleep a little longer and then no, no rounds? I can chant later or I can just not chant. What's the point? And our, our faith, our confidence will be decreasing. We will not be able to progress because also enthusiasm will not be there. Since we have no, no confidence, we have no faith, so then why am I doing it? Now I don't want to do it. I want to do something else instead. And then now, then that will be, yeah, very bad for us. So how to develop the, the shraddha, the faith? That's Shabrapad, now he explains that the devotees, now they may be now for some time as maybe like karmis, right, but they're innocent, they are not atheists. And as soon as they hear now some explanation of the holy name or explanation or Krishna's pastimes, or they hear the holy name, just like that, then immediately, then now some seed of the desire to understand more manifests and that's the shraddha. So then now they go on, like Bhakti Nothakur, he, in his novel, The Jaya Vahdharma. And he describes very nicely now the shraddha. It was a maya sanyasi and then he was very, very well versed now in Vedas and Vedanta. Now he did many things. But once he heard some devotees now singing in Varanasi while he was meditating. So they were chanting the holy name and he got disturbed, but he didn't know, he didn't think much about it. But the holy name was constantly like in his mind, like nowadays. Now, when, when you hear some catchy, like a Bollywood song, then you may remember that song now for some time, wow, okay, no. So the same way, then the mind of the sanyasi was being disturbed by. So he could not think about his sanyas duties. He was just unable to continue. So then he started to look for the devotees, where to go, what to do, now, what's the power of the holy name? So with the little faith he had in the beginning, then he was going. And he walked from Varanasi to Vrindavan and then from Vrindavan to Nawarvi. So he, because he was so eager to find out and then yes, he found out. Now, so then he got a spiritual master and then he became a great vashnavi. So the little shraddha which now manifests now in the devotee that way, then keeps progressing. So shraddha goes sadhusanga, bhajanakriya, anartanagriti, nishtaruchy, asakti, bava, then last prema. So all these stages of, of shraddhu prema, they are just different levels of shraddha. The devotee who is now on the prema platform, he is fully, fully surrendered to Krishna, atman. So then he, he just cannot do anything else than what is directly done for Krishna, that's prema. And then in between, there are various levels, how much we are willing to surrender, how much we are now willing to do for Krishna, how much we want to do for ourselves. Progressing that way, then our confidence also increases. And the confidence mainly increases from the platform of nishtha. Because nishtha, that's when we get really attached to the process of devotion service. So before that, the process is anishta. And the process of anishta Bhakti, it's up down. Sometimes we make a mistake and then again we correct it. And sometimes we do this, sometimes we do that, now it's, it's problematic, but yeah, it works. But slowly. And our confidence also goes up and down, enthusiasm up and down as we go. But when, when we are in the platform, on the platform of nishtha, then the, we are more fixed. So we are able to perform the devotion activities, even though there may be some ups and downs, but the ups and downs will be more like on the subtle, like a mental platform. And we will be able to take care of it. So there is unlikely some like a gross fall down happening on nishtha platform. But now, on the nishtha, the devotee understands, oh, I can actually now control my mind. I can, if I want to chant, I can chant. The mind may give little bit disturbance, but I can control it. So the devotee, he does whatever he wants to do. And he is fixed in that and that's nishtha. So his confidence from that point grows very much and now enthusiasm, everything increased. Bhakti Nothakur also explains from nishtha platform, the process of devotion service goes much faster. Because there is no attachment anymore to the gross material senses. And that enthusiasm or that now confidence, that faith, how we develop it, it's in the process of devotee, I mean in the association of devotees, so sadhusanga. So we need to constantly learn the association of devotees, discuss. Now, we have to keep exchanges, the loving relationship. Dharate pratikrinhati, guhyamaki prichati, punkte bojate. So these six loving exchanges in association with devotees will increase our faith, our confidence and our enthusiasm devotion service.
Thank you so much, Maharaj. I just want to ask one question from Megha Mahatji. Can I ask?
Yes.
Mahatji was asking about, like we talking about prajalpa. So Mahatji was asking that sometime with the relatives, we just start talking about mundane topics and we sometime try to divert them to the, sometime try to divert to the maki topic or maybe Krishna topic. But still you don't want to do that. Then how to be with such situations?
I'm, I'm sorry, I could not fully understand that something.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Yes, Maharaj, Mahatji is asking question from, on behalf of Megha Mahatji on the group. So Megha Mahatji has a question that sometimes we tend to indulge in like non-Krishna conscious topics or topics of prajalpa among our relatives and friends. But still like we hear also that we should not, but still we have a tendency to do that. So how should we avoid it?
Yes.
That is the question, Mahatji?
Yes, Mahatji, but it's like we want to divert, but still they don't divert it. But they still want to, the relative wants to keep on talking, but how, how we can avoid that?
Okay. So Mahatji has a question that we, we, we understand that we should try to divert this and but where it is not happening or the relative is not letting us to divert, so it is not happening. So how to do that?
You see, it very much also depends on the relationship. So sometimes we have to see, we have to discriminate between how to take association of someone and how to give association. So you see, there was the Shabrapad's way of preaching. Once he was talking to some Formula One driver. And they were talking about the Formula One, about some engines, which he was quite surprised that Shabrapad knows something about. And now, but they talked, talked about it. So it seemed like a prajalpa. But what actually Shabrapad was doing, now he was now getting the man more interested. And then at some point, so he, he let, he let the driver explain things and he was very enthusiastic and then now explaining, Shabrapad, now he was like a nodding and somehow ask questions and it's, 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 it's fine. Then at some point, then Shabrapad, now he asked him something. Like, okay, when you go so fast and you are overtaking something, don't you feel fear? I'm not afraid. And, and then, yes, okay, but that's part of it, now so. And then he asked, and do you know where fear comes from? Oh, no. And do you know how fear is connected to Krishna? And then, and then connecting the whole discussion before, he connects it through and starts preaching to him about how Krishna manifests not in our life. So he, he was, and he was very enthusiastic and therefore he was open up and therefore he was able now to hear what Shabrapad is talking. So he was very successful in that. If you try to preach to someone and that someone, or he's, now see, he's only able to talk about some topic which you can consider as a prajalpa. And he said, no, don't, no. Then there is a good chance you will just shut him down and he will not be willing to talk to you. And then who will you preach? So then you should be able to discriminate between how you take association and give association. So when somebody, now you can preach to someone about, about Krishna consciousness, most of the time, then you should be able to hear, hear what the person is saying. Now you don't have to be now identifying with it, you don't have to agreeing with it, but let him speak what he wants to say. And while he is talking, then you can start connecting, how will you explain now what he is talking through Krishna conscious way? So in other words, now is it possible what he is doing, let him do, but is it possible to connect to Krishna consciousness? Because every activity, what we do in the material world, everything is connected to Krishna some way or other. It's just a question of whether we recognize it, whether we know it or not. So if somebody wants to do something, then like, and especially children, they want to do something, try to not discuss. try to not discourage them from doing, of course discourage them from nonsense, but not from which may or which you know how to connect it to Krishna consciousness. So dovetailing, that's very important. So the Prajalpa also, no, it, it can be Prajalpa. But if it, if it helps you to catch attention of the person and then you can preach him about Krishna, you do it. That's fine. That's very good. But you should not get overrun by it and lose, now, the, the. In other words, instead of, no, you giving the association, you will be making the association of the Prajalpa and then that's not good. So relatives and to parents, you have to be sensitive. You, you have to. Preaching to the mother, you cannot talk back. So, okay, you listen. Now, you may, now, show that there is some other, you know, way how that can be dealt with, giving examples, but with respect. For some other relatives, you may not be needed to give so much of respect. So you give somebody, if he's not going to, you know, listen to what you want to say, you can be more heavy and maybe that will change him. So, the relationships should be maintained, especially like among the relatives. But you should, it should not hamper your own progress in Krishna consciousness. So you have to see, now, how you balance it. And now the best way is to make them friendly. So even your, your own parents, now, if you bring some nice prashat and you are nice to them, then they tend to be satisfied and they will not bother you. They will not, you know, laugh at you that, oh, look at this, now you are just, you know, joining some cult, now you are being brainwashed and, no. They will understand, actually, you know, the qualities which devotees are maintaining are something which are very noble and you don't see them much around, so they will respect that. In other words, not try to find out something, just whatever they can respect, on the devotees, on you, and maintain the relationship. But try to teach them or show them the way how to connect their activities in Krishna consciousness. And it can be subtle in the beginning. And when they become more interested, you can continue more. And that way then, you can associate with them by giving your association to them. You understand?
Yes, Maharaj, thank you so much. Thank you so much, Maharaj. Ranatnam Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Maharaj, do we have time for one or two more questions or?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, Maharaj. Maharaj, so Anita Mathaji is asking a question on the chat. Ranatpranam Maharaj. In a purport of Shrimad Bhagavatam, Sheila Prabhupada mentioned that paramatma realization is but a partial realization of Vasudev. And if one is successful in that attempt, one realizes Vasudev in full. I couldn't understand it properly because in paramatma realization, one sees paramatma at samadhi stage. Can you please explain the journey of a soul from paramatma realization to the realization of Vasudev in full?
See, the, so there is a Brahman realization, which is the, no, impersonal realization of the Lord. Or it's a manifestation, impersonal manifestation. Paramatma is localized manifestation of the Lord. And Bhagavan is a full manifestation, full personal manifestation of the Lord. So, paramatma, it's not in the spiritual world. Paramatma is here, now, specifically manifested so that Krishna can guide everyone, all the living entities, now, what to do, how to do, how to go back to God. So then yogis, and, well, yogis actually are supposed to meditate on paramatma. And when they are successful, then they should realize that taking the devotional service is the next step. Which you see in Bhagavatam, see Kadhamune. He realized that, he, he is a devotee, he's a great devotee. In fact, now, he's a father of Kapiladev, now, so then the Lord appreciated very much his devotional activities. So that, that's, that's great. But now, when you hear the Yoga Sutras, then they recommend you, you meditate on paramatma to the yogi. And then once you achieve the state of samadhi, then drop the paramatma. The paramatma was the best object to meditate on. But what you want are the cities. So the yogis, they want the cities. They have, just, they reached the paramatma level. They, they could have make another much step and then be devotees. But they are not, because it's on the, so they use paramatma and they drop paramatma. And they get the cities. And therefore, they stay in the material world. So, what, what we want, the devotees, devotees should not be much concerned, now, about Brahman realization. Because this is impersonal, we, we are not interested. And paramatma realization, we should not be focusing on that. The devotee, when he gets purified from his anartas, then devotee understands that, that is, the con, what's, conscience is par. We know when we do something wrong, we feel bad about, that's the paramatma. And when we are about to something, we know what, what we should do and we shouldn't, we know what we should not do. Paramatma is giving us the direction what we should do. But most of the time, then we choose otherwise, we don't follow. Because we don't see clearly, due to the anartas in our heart, we, we don't see the paramatma. We are unable to, no, see that and therefore we don't follow. We think that, oh, it's just a thought, some idea, but I like the idea, no, other idea more, so I will do it my way. But the devotee, when he is purified of his anartas, then he very clearly sees the paramatma's instructions. He understands very much. And at that point, the devotee, he, he is not able to refuse whatever paramatma instructs him. Because he knows, it's not my thought. Actually, this is paramatma instructing me and therefore I want to do it. So devotees, they realize paramatma, but not, the paramatma realization in their life is just helping them in the progress of devotion activities. Unlike yogis, who they realize paramatma or they are about to and they drop the paramatma because they just want, you know, their cities. So devotees don't want that. Is, is that clear somewhat?
Yes, Maharaj, it is clear now.
Hare Krishna.
Okay.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Maharaj, I just wanted to add on to that point. So I wanted to just have a confirmation on some understanding. So, like, we can also, can we also say that, since the spiritual master is the external manifestation of the paramatma. So whatever instructions that a spiritual master is giving us, so we can take this as direct instructions from paramatma and not to make the thing complicated if we simply follow the instructions of a spiritual master, that would be enough?
Yeah. Guru Mukha Parmavakya, Chitakaryaikya. Yes, it's, we take the instructions of a spiritual master now as the most important. And we follow those because he will instruct us, now, in whatever Krishna wants us to do. Now, sometimes the spiritual master, not knowing our conditioned nature, he may not, now, immediately, now, fully put us, now, in, in the, in the way that, to do something which we don't like to do. He will first let us to do some, something which we like to do. That way we purify ourselves. And after the purification, then he can instruct us in doing something which we may not have been, now, into. Like the example, now, we see that Tamal Krishna Maharaj. Now, after, now, Ido Xanyas and then he was, now, well, he progressed very much, right, in, in his devotional services. And then, at some point, Shraparap asked him, okay, go to China and preach. Now, he had no idea, you know, what he could do, but he said yes, and he was successful. But it wouldn't happen or he wouldn't say yes probably, you know, some years before that because he was not ready for it. Yes, so, that's, that's what, so, that's the connection between the paramatma and the spiritual master. Because ultimately, the paramatma is our Chaita guru. So we are able to perceive paramatma when we get purified of the anartas. If we are, we have our, maintain our anartas. The anartas create desires and due to the desires, we perceive paramatma as a thought. Nothing more than that. And therefore, we think that we can do, well, you can take it or leave it or go against it, it doesn't matter. We, we don't have the proper understanding because of our impurities.
Yes. Thank you, Maharaj. Maharaj, I had one last question. So if you allow, can I ask?
Okay.
Okay. Maharaj, at one time, at one point, there is an upbringing of understanding that I should depend more and more on Krishna. And, and on the other, on the other side, that I am also trying to depend on things like life insurance or medical insurance and things like that. And, and directly trying to depend on such things. So how to understand this Maharaj as a grihasta in our life? And how to differentiate between being foolish and like being practical in Krishna, like, in, in these kind of matters in Krishna consciousness?
See, it's not very simple. You in grihasta life, then you are in a position of the father or husband. So then, you have to take care, you have to protect. Now, you yourself, you may not really care more. Okay, I can just go and sit under the tree and then just meditate there, chant Majapa and then I'll be perfect. Yes, but you have taken up the duties of grihasta life. So unless, now, the, the situation in your grihasta life is so bad that you have to give it up, then you have the responsibility to take care. It's like Shraparap also, no, he was taking care as a proper grihasta. Only when the situation was so bad that he could not continue, then he just, no, pack his bags and then just left. So, that's, that's okay to do. But if there is no situation like that, not, the situation still is not, not that bad, you took the responsibility, you should maintain the responsibility. So I know what does it mean? So, it means that you have to grow up. But it doesn't mean that, now, you have to live like in some absolute, like a luxury, right? Like, you don't have to build, I don't know how many story, like Ambani in Bombay is building. You don't have to do that.
Okay.
But, you're like, no, Shraparap's father, right? So then, now, he goes on and then he sells clothes. And he goes to the shop for one hour a day, one or two hours a day. And that's it. Then he comes back. And he, now, takes care of the family, he takes care of his, you know, spiritual life. And it's fine. Now, it was enough to maintain the family. Now, naturally, now, somebody may say, but if you stay there for four hours, then you get double of the, of the money, then you can have better facility. You can take care of better of the family. And if you stay eight hours, then, now, you can quadruple, no. So, like this, people think because they are, their senses are not controlled. But if the senses are controlled and you have faith in Krishna, then you understand, no. No, I cannot get more than what I am supposed to. So, it doesn't matter how long you work, but still you will get as much as you are supposed to. And you can use the rest of the, the rest of your life, you know, in some activities which are going to enhance your Krishna consciousness or at least enhance your relationship with your family. Like nowadays, you have people, they work sixteen hours a day. They don't even see their children properly, they don't see their wife properly. They work because they want money. But in the process, then most of the time, they lose their family. The wife, now, she is sick of not seeing the husband. So she will just go and have some relationship with somebody else, now, because, now, I, I cannot live like this. So he's not protecting. And then he says, look, I'm bringing so much money to home and you are, you know, being unchaste and like that. No, she's being unchaste because he's not protecting. So he's not following the, the, his Dharma. But, now, what can you do? Because the whole society, now, they are preaching about sense gratification. They are not preaching about renouncing sense gratification. So then naturally, all the people are misguided. And then, you, you cannot really blame them for everything. It's, it's just the, how they process. Therefore, now, first of all, now, people should be taught in the schools how to control their senses. When you learn how to control your senses, then, now, sometimes you may want to enjoy the senses, but you will enjoy the senses within the limit and you will be happy. But if you go beyond the limit, then where is your limit? You can just go on until you die. And you will not be more happy than the person who enjoyed the senses within the limits. That's, that's a foolishness to think like this. Now, so controlling your senses, now, it's like, you, you want to eat, you know, something nice and you will put, like a, or say like paratha. You want to eat paratha and then you will eat it with yogurt and you can put some achar. So now, you will eat the paratha and with the yogurt and the achar, it will be very nice taste, it will complement it. But if you are accustomed, say like eating achar on its own, so after that, eating the achar with the paratha, it will not taste nice, it's not enough. You will need more, more achar than the paratha to, to get, you know, something, something out of it. But you are not getting more satisfaction, you know, by eating more achar than the person who is the paratha without, you know, with eating little of the achar. without, you know, with eating little of the achar. It's a foolishness. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, Maharaj.
Yes, so, yeah, like that.
Okay, Maharaj. So that means like whatever it takes to fulfill the duties that one should do in a grihasta life?
Yes. You have committed to it, then fulfill it. After your duties are over, like Kadhamune, no? He gave child, the child grew up, no, Kapiladev, so then he would take care of Deva Huti. And then he walked out. He took sanyas. So that was perfectly sanctioned by the Lord. So, yeah.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Uh, my question is similar to this, um, does that mean that saving money for the future is also, I mean, we should do that? Or we should, uh, I mean, because we in India, we don't have any support system after retirement. So is it okay to save money for that cause?
You see, Rupa Goswami, now he gave us a way how we should, you know, take care of our money. So whatever, now it comes. You get the, you get money for, for a month, right? Now you have to pay some bills. You have to take, uh, care of maybe some, some, uh, maintaining your business, whatever it, whatever you are doing. You have to pay, you know, the school fees for the children, whatever it is. And then you end up with some extra money. So that's your profit for the month. Now that profit should be distributed accordingly, that fifty percent of that should go for Krishna conscious activities. Twenty-five percent should go into your saving account. You should keep it for, for emergencies. Twenty-five percent, then you use for whatever you need, like entertainment or you want to go somewhere, you want to go to some holiday or have some fun. So that's the proportion, then how it should be dealt with.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Maharaj. Thank you for clearing my doubt. Hare Krishna.
Okay.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Thank you so much, Maharaj.
Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna Maharaj. Hare Krishna. So we thanks Maharaj by chanting one round of Hare Krishna Mahamanta. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hare Ram, Hare Ram, 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 Hare, Hare. Rupa, Kali, Chai. Hare Krishna Maharaj. Thank you so much.
Hare Krishna. Hare Krishna.
Hare Krishna.